Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is July 12th, 2022, 6:00 PM. I am in the Northeast Kingdom and you guys are down at the Lower Theater in Bellas Falls. Let's call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of June 7th, 2022. Would like a motion?
Yeah, I was trying to mess with the microphone volume. Just trying to get a little more volume on here, Peter. It's a little low. Hang on a second.
While you're doing that, I'll move to approve the minutes, June 7th, 2022.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Yes, you did have a second, Peter.
Okay, I'm having a little trouble. It's not coming through very loud here, so. All right, motion remained and seconded to approve the minutes of July 7th, June 7th, 2022. Any corrections, deletions, or additions? Hearing and seeing none? All those in favor would say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Of all aye, motion carries. Additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and repressing matters that will require ratification in a future meeting.
No additions now.
Anyone else on the board?
Yes. Yeah, we can talk about that. I can do that in the manager's report. Yeah.
Can you repeat that? I can't hear a thing he said.
Yeah, I'm not hearing anything either.
All right.
I can hear your spot, but I'm not hearing. I didn't hear a word that.
I'm gonna see if the owls aren't picking up on the microphone.
Yeah, I didn't hear Rick either.
Is that any louder by any chance?
Is that any better? Can you hear me any better?
We could hear you. It was the other people we couldn't hear.
Can you hear Rick now?
Oh, I cannot hear Rick if he's speaking.
Okay.
I got my sound up, so.
Yeah, Rick's gonna come over here to pick it up closer to this.
Okay, yeah, you're coming up pretty good shape here now. I can get you good now.
Yep, okay, very good.
Did you have a statement to make, Rick? Or because if you did, I didn't.
Can't hear him.
Not hearing a word.
Not hearing.
Okay, we're working on it. I know, yeah, it's still not right for some reason.
I could hear you fine, Scott, just that.
Yeah, it's not picking up from the owl for some reason, Peter.
Need a bigger hammer?
Need a bigger bird.
Could you use the old mics?
Well, we don't have those guy. Those guys aren't on scene. They're down at the, they're at the studio at the moment. So. I'll see if fact can come back down and we can, we can try to get the microphone situation resolved. Right? It's just, right now it doesn't show anything except just. It doesn't say anything on here about any other microphone.
Zoom settings.
Monitor, wireless.
Does that, if you, yeah, right there. Yeah, so click on that dropdown.
That says mute.
Try on the video, same thing, the dropdown.
All that does is take off on the video.
The arrow next to the words.
Right.
Little hat.
It's on all cameras.
So can you get the same thing with the hat on the mute?
Picking up Gary now, along with you.
Yep, Gary's standing here. There it is, let's try that. See if you can hear us better now.
I can hear you fine. I don't know anybody else is coming on. Try someone else out there.
Testing, Rick speaking. Can you hear me?
Okay, there you go. I got that one. Can you hear that?
Yeah, I can hear.
Okay, let's try it again, Rick.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we had received a request from Heidi Lauricella that the town remove the school bus stop signs because they're no longer being used. The bus stops at every family's house now. So forgotten, I spoke with her and I just wanted to throw that on the agenda somewhere.
What's school bus? Where's the school bus sign that she's talking about?
They're all over town, apparently. School bus stop here.
They're sort of random, Peter. They were done over time as they had sort of aggregated pickup points. So I've asked Andy just to go out and see what's out and about. I did talk to the superintendent. They are obsolete. They don't need them or, you know, there's no requirement for them to be there anymore, so.
Okay, I got you.
Take them down as, you know, as we can get to them.
Okay, let's move on to public comment on items not on the agenda. Three minutes per person. Is anyone? I don't have anything. Does the board, anybody on board?
Betsy came to the meeting. She wanted to give a BIFTA related update, so she's coming to the.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, I can.
I just wanted to invite you to our annual meeting. It's Thursday at the Waypoint Center, starting at 5:30. And we filled out an application for the Waypoint Center, so.
Yep, I saw that.
I guess that's really all I wanted to say, so.
Well, that's like short and sweet. Thank you. Wish everybody was that quick. Okay, manager's report. We're getting to you there. Cass, hang in there.
It'll be.
Hard to follow Betsy.
Well, that's true, yeah. Scott, you got any manager's report?
Couple things. Just want to talk a little bit about updating on some street lighting issues. We did have the contractors back out again, out on the main bridge. Remember the one street light that is on the renovated bridge that is closest to the old Sennell building was not operational. They came back out a second time after it was re-energized by Green Mountain Power and they did get it working. So I was gonna take a ride by tonight just to make sure that it was running, but I was assured that that light is now finally up, is now up and running. The same contractor has ordered a replacement ballast. One of the things we're trying to isolate, we've got about 20 different streetlights that are not working in the downtown. And their recommendation was, as opposed to going and swapping out all the units, is to try to replace ballasts and see if that will, that will increase the longevity of the current lights. We had looked at some proposals. Elijah had brought us some proposals to replace the entire poles and the entire down the road, to replace them in their entirety. And those prices are significantly more than this option to at least get the ballast replaced and get them back in operational. So the cost of the ballast, the cost of bringing two men in a bucket truck and about 20 of these units, it'll be closer to $10,000. Get all, if that's the actual troubleshooting shows that that's the actual problem, that's about a $10,000 fix. So we can get to the larger discussion with the board about replacement of entire units, which is much more expensive. So that work is underway. We'll see if that is hopefully gonna solve that problem in the short term.
Scott?
Yes, sir.
Any warranty on those lights? Are some of them relatively recently purchased?
Most of them are well-passed warranty. And I think some of them are 15 plus years old, if I remember. Not all of them, but some of them. Some of them were placed because they've been knocked down. We had a couple on Canal Street that got knocked over during the winter season. We had to replace them. So, but the vast majority passed the initial 10-year period for the, for the ballast and the lights themselves. The Opera House finally has all of the hearing impaired system wired and ready to go. The company that they purchased the system from is going to come out and work with Tim and then the staff on how it operates. So we're hoping to have that up and running by sometime no later than beginning of August. So if you recall, the original system had been purchased back in 2019 and then through COVID it had not been worked on. And then when we found out about it later this spring, we prioritized the getting that thing up and running. So our fingers are crossed that that will be up and running, hopefully, so we can advertise that availability for people sometime in August. Popcorn machine that's down there is 40 plus years old. It was bought in 1981. It's beyond repair at this point. It's becoming an electrical hazard and a concern. So I do have some pricing to replace it. It's probably in the neighborhood, a light unit from the same company is about $7,500. At this point, I think it would make sense for us to replace it before we have some kind of problem with that, that unit burning up or burning out at some point and creating a real hazard. The paving is still scheduled to begin the first week of August. We're working with basements. They've not identified a specific date yet to start with milling. They've been doing, I guess, quite a bit of work on Route 5, so they are a little behind on that schedule, but they are still telling us that they'll make, that they'll get the milling done prior to the paving, which will begin in the beginning of August. So at this point, we have our fingers crossed that those things will all come together and that we'll have all of that work done. As well as I talked with Andy about starting, if you remember, the school board had bought two of those rapid flashing beacon pedestrian crossing signals that we were going to install near the Central Elementary School. And so we're gonna start that project probably after the paving's done in August, so before school starts, before Labor Day, so we can get that up and running as well. So, I hope you guys have been busy. Lots of work is ongoing, but we're trying to get all these things done and ready to go for the fall. That was it for me, Peter.
Okay, good. Before we get into the regular agenda, I will say that there will be an executive session tonight on a real estate issue and a personnel issue. And there may be a comment after we come out of executive session, depending on the discussion in the board. Okay, I think Cass, we're about ready for you. Do you?
Okay.
Agenda to discuss animal control ordinance issues.
Right. As I said, it's hard to follow Betsy. She was so nice and concise. I've got it down to one sheet. I'll try to move right through it as best I can. Greetings and good evening to all my neighbors. My name is Cass Wright. I'm your duly appointed animal control officer. And I'd like to use this opportunity to remind everyone about some concerns I have this upcoming summer and autumn seasons for all of you exercising the privilege of being dog owners or canine care providers. First and foremost, our leash laws. Vermont statute states that all dogs not under strict and immediate voice command must be kept on a leash held by its owner, its handler, rather, whenever it is anywhere in public. This is far further narrow by the Rockingham Town Ordinance that all dogs appearing anywhere in public in the villages of Saxons River or Bellas Falls that are not contained inside a motor vehicle must be kept on a leash held by its handler at all times. No exceptions allowed. Remember, please, there are no end runs or workarounds to this law, not even for carrying dogs or attaching dogs to bicycles or scooters. Let me say this again for emphasis. All dogs in public spaces and places in Bellas Falls and Saxons River must be kept either in a vehicle or held on a leash. Period. This is true of all dogs living in Saxons River or Bellas Falls or even visiting either village with their owners. Again, no exception. Next, the citizenship of your dog. Vermont State statutes demand that all dogs must be vaccinated routinely for rabies every three years without lapse, starting ideally at 90 days of age, but certainly by their sixth month by a licensed veterinarian. And that once done, they be registered in their town of residence with their town clerk. And that tags identifying that vaccination and that registration be attached to that dog's collar. And that the collar with those tags attached be kept upon that animal at all times without fail throughout Saxons River, Bellas Falls, Rockingham, and everywhere else in the state of Vermont. If this seems severe or overly strict, let me point out that sooner or later, all dogs escape their owner's home or vehicles and often are recovered by other people, including myself. This brings me quickly, but firmly to the topic of loose dogs. Folks, if you encounter a loose dog, do not approach them, do not touch them, do not go near them. Call me immediately, 289-7327, 24/7. I will dispatch myself as quickly as I can to assess the situation. Again, even if you are in the mood to be a good Samaritan, it is actually counterproductive for you to become proximity or physically involved with that animal. One of the most important pieces of logic behind this is that about 18 times out of 20, a loose running dog is being followed by its owner by about five to eight minutes. And that taking that dog into your custody, even for the best principles, breaks that chain of probability to get them back. Please, call me. I will assess the situation. I will do what is necessary. Don't you get near a loose dog. This is critical. Without those tags, I'm gonna talk about tags on the collar, I cannot ascertain your dog's ownership or identity or medical status. And if I can't solve the riddle of who he or she belongs to, I'll have to transport that dog all the way down to the Wyndham County Humane Society in Dummerston. And when that happens, it is a long and expensive process to get your dog back. Lastly, please do clean up behind your dogs when you take them out for their exercise. This means always having a plastic grocery type bag with you or some type of disposable mitt with which to retrieve your dog's feces and transport that waste to an appropriate public waste container or if need be, all the way back home. This is a legal requirement cited specifically by a town of Rockingham ordinance and enforceable in all six villages and everywhere in between. Finally, neglecting any of these requirements can result in being issued citations by myself or Wyndham County Deputy Sheriff with fines starting at $25, all the way up into hundreds. It might even result in district court appearances, which I'd much prefer to avoid, as I'm sure would any of my neighbors. In closing, let me urge my fellow dog owners to reach out to me with any canine concerns or questions or requests for help of any sort. My number is 289-7327. And my information can be found quoted on the Health Department page of the Rockingham Town website. What questions can I answer? Questions from my board?
Rick? I noticed on the Saxons River Facebook page, people often mention their lost pets. Do you find social media to be something that's helpful?
Oh, Chris, it's probably, it's probably the biggest, best tool I have on my belt right now. When I take charge of a loose dog, that is the first thing I do is to get them on social media, get them on Facebook, get them on every type of online exposure I can. And I have to say, it's not what, it's been pretty darn reliable. This community comes together pretty quickly, helping to reunite the dog with the owner, which is ultimately my goal.
Um, Cass?
Yes?
In addition to that, it might be good to post on social media everything you just read to us. Just, you know, there's, I don't know, four, five, six local groups. They're running on progress. Bellas Falls looking forward.
That's an excellent idea. I think I'll probably draft this up into a little bit more concise, better flowing.
It would be good. And then, you know, people can tell others. One thing I wasn't aware of, so this, this includes even walking in the town forests and places like that, right?
If it's anywhere in the villages of Bellas Falls or Saxons River, every dog must be on a leash at all times, held nonstop by its handler.
Okay, so even at the Historical Society's Riverfront Park, if that would apply?
Yep, yep, anywhere, anywhere in Bellas Falls or Saxons River.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, as I mentioned, the governing state statutes says that all dogs in Vermont in general must be under strict and immediate voice command. This is, as I mentioned, this is further narrow for us by a Rockingham Town Ordinance that all dogs appearing anywhere in public in those villages must be kept on, on a leash. All I can say about the rest is make sure you know where you are. Make sure if, if you are in Rockingham outside those villages and you want to keep your dog under voice command, make sure you truly have voice command. Sometimes we tend to look at our pet ownership through, through rose colored spectacles. We think we have a lot more control than we do. That has a lot to do with the immense upspike this year of, of dog bites across the town of Rockingham. People being out and about on a cheery, bright weather day and their dog is with them and he behaves until he sees something he doesn't like. And then tragedy ensues.
Cass, one thing I would like to do is see if you can mention on the enforcement of unlicensed dogs.
Uh, yeah, I am in ongoing discussions with Scott and with Kathleen about that. I feel that we have to do something. Back even as recently as 10, 12 years ago, if you were to print out the pages of dog registration, the town of Rockingham, it would have run up to, up to close to 50 pages. And now sadly, I can accomplish that same goal in under two. So that gives you an idea of how horrendously our dog registration obligations have dropped off. We've got to get back up on that horse somehow. I don't yet want to entertain the idea of actually taking the whole list and going door to door. That seems a little intrusive. It could be done. You know, I had, I had offers of help that way from the Wyndham County Sheriffs and our Bellas Falls Police Department to assist me. I want to try some other approaches. It can't be allowed to get much worse. It is at a critical stage. It's very much on my mind. Thank you for bringing that up, Peter.
I, I noticed a couple of years ago that we did have the sheriff go around with a list and that did motivate some activity, but not very much. And then it just kind of set by the wayside. Sorry to cut your bunny, go ahead.
Oh, it's okay. Would it be feasible to contact all the area vets? And because that they, when they, when they have a dog patient, take note of their dog tag? And if people say, well, they're not, they don't have a dog tag, perhaps let us know?
I have approached that topic with several vets and gotten a very, a very polite and cool reception.
Yeah, they went into it.
It's rather like asking human doctors to, to share information open-handedly. They're very good about working with me when I have a bite situation to confirm vaccinations and inoculations. But beyond that, their information is considered to be, to be privileged.
Well, I guess you could, we could just request that they ask for that information on intake. And if people say they ever have one, the vet could perhaps remind them of the importance of getting one, just as an inducement there. And maybe not tell them, you know, snitch on people, but just sort of help us, you know.
I've actually approached that, Bonnie, and, and it was, it was turned down.
Okay, well, just an idea.
And not that, appreciate it.
Okay, let's, let's move along here. We've got a lengthy agenda here tonight and some long discussions coming up, so.
Rick had one more follow-up?
Oh, go ahead.
When you apprehend a dog that's missing and isn't registered, does that person get a fine?
No. I could go that route. I, I tried to indicate to people that they really do need to register their dog. And quite often, what the case is, is that the dog often is registered and then I hear the song and dance about the kitchen drawer. When all the dog tags fell off, I say, listen, don't use those silly little things they give you for the tags. You know, get a regular jumper from the hardware store. Put it on there so it will stay on. The tag does me no good in finding you if it's inside the kitchen drawer. So I haven't gone that route yet. I find I have to do a little bit of a balancing act. On the one hand, I'm prepared to be as firm as I need to be to get good compliance from people. At the same time, when I walk down Acton Street and someone's coming at me with a dog, I want to be able to smile, wait, walk up and chat them up without them going, oh, dog's in the drawer, sir. You know, and then cutting up the side street, which I have actually had happen a couple of times in extreme circumstances. So I try and keep things on the up and up and bright. But yeah, I have all this firmly in mind and I need to do better. We need to do better. And I'm working on it. I promise.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's close this discussion out. Deb, are you still on there? I saw your hand earlier. Were you, did you have a comment or did you sign off? Deborah, I must have signed off. Okay, let's move on to item number two, which is the update to the Cemetery Committee proposal. There are some articles in your packet to look at, if you haven't already. Scott, I'll let you lead this one off.
Yep, so there's a couple of things, I guess. You know, we had a sort of preliminary conversation about if we wanted to go forward and establish formally through the board, a cemetery committee. You know, other communities have done that and they have various types of responsibilities. So there was, you know, just for your information, how Brattleboro currently has their committee established. The other information is more for building our conversation towards budget as we look towards our next round of conversations about next year's budget. And, and we had discussed about the costs of potentially improving some of the grounds and some of the, beyond just the grass cutting and some of the. beyond just the grass cutting and some of the things that we have been talking about. And just wanted to give you a sense of just again, some of the costs of what other communities have found when they've been working, especially in historic cemeteries, in order to, you know, raise stones and repair stones and try to bring some of these facilities back up and, and, you know, into a better condition. So I just wanted those more for the board's information than depending upon how the board wants, if you want us to draft up something for you to consider for your September meeting to establish a committee on a more formal basis.
Scott, I thought Walter was going to come to us in August with some, some information as far as that committee went.
Um, I think we're going to talk about it a little bit up at the, um, right up at the meeting house.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, I wasn't sure that, I thought I talked to him and he said he was going to have something information. Maybe that's what we're going to, all right. Anyone else have any comments on this? I haven't seen any. Let's move on to number three and discuss issues with Lower Bartonsville. I don't know if anyone's here from there. There is supposed to be four people.
Yes. Yes, folks are here. You guys want to come up maybe up to the sit up at the dais and certainly we can pick you up easier on the microphone and with the the video as well. Your patients, sorry about all our technical problems.
There's a information in your packet about this issue, speeding and a few other items. There's also a copy of, an old copy of the Wyndham Sheriff's Department contract proposal, not proposal, but their contract form. It does state and a charge of fifty one dollars per hour, but the current one is now sixty per hour. Uh, you people from Bartonsville are looking for thirty hours per month. From what I understand in your email, that equates eighteen hundred dollars a month, just for people's information. And that equals out to twenty two thousand, six hundred dollars a year. We have no money in the budget set aside for police in Rockingham right now. And we have had feedback from people objecting to the fact that they're going to pay for protection of one area town in their taxes. So that being said, you're on. Go for it.
My name is Steve Chipman. I live at one seventy Lower Bartonsville Road. This is my wife, Sarah Jane, who also lives at one seventy Lower Bartonsville Road and John at Claire Park. On Lower Bartonsville Road, the old schoolhouse, right down by Marty Campbell. Yeah, we, we'd like to introduce a few things to the board and to make the town aware of some of what's happening at the Lower Bartonsville. And I can appreciate that in other parts of town, there would be a concern that taxpayer money was being spent in Lower Bartonsville. But we pay taxes. And a part of what we'd like to hear from the board is on a matter related to, say, traffic or speeding. What do you do? What do you do when Saxon's River comes and says they're?
Saxon River has their own police department. They, they hire the Wyndham Sheriff's on their own. They don't pay, they pay for it by themselves.
So if we fast forward to what are our, what are our options here in terms of?
Here's a, here's a situation. If, if the board decides to provide police protection, it would probably have to be for the whole town. And if you go back in history, every time it's been brought up with that dirty six letter word of merger, hate to bring that up, but it's always been defeated from Rockham saying they do not want police coverage in the town of Rockingham, which you are part of. If we provide it or decided to go with it, then everybody else is going to jump on a bandwagon saying they want the same coverage. So it, it opens up a lot of Pandora boxes that we are looking at. I've talked with Sue Hammond, who's on here, same as I am. And she's told me she's explained to you people some of the issues and that she doesn't think that you need thirty hours of coverage either. So it may be, we'd have to talk with the manager about it and bring her back up again at another time, another meeting and but it may be a factor that we try and consult with the police and have them do spot, spot speed checks up there or as Sue told me that once a couple of people get the hundred dollar ticket for speeding, they'll, they perhaps they'll smarten up. But who knows? From what Sue tells me, most of the traffic is from north to south versus south to north. So it looks like they're skirting something around Chester because they, Chester is very adamant about speeding up there. You, you go a mile over the limit and they're on you. Doesn't make much long. That's, that's the way they work. So.
Yeah, Peter, can I interject here for a second? It's actually, it's actually both way. It's a lot of it is commuters. So it's the same commuters. They go, they're probably heading to the interstate in the morning and then heading back in the afternoon. So it's not that it's just only north to south. And then there is speeding throughout the day. But the, the biggest offenders, the ones going the fastest tend to be in that morning commute and evening commute hours, but they're consistent. I mean, they're, every morning they're going that fast.
Yeah, in the, in the packet, there's Scott also with our speed sign that we put out there. It does show the, the breakdown of the it's kind of surprising. It's four thousand, forty one hundred people going over or going less than forty miles an hour. Can't believe there's that much traffic in Bartonsville. I don't know how long to sign with you, Scott. Was that there about a month or so?
Pretty close, Peter.
Yeah, okay.
A little shy of a month.
All right, so it's pretty good slough traffic going up there. Bonnie, you had a, I see your hand up.
Yeah, this would take some time. But something sort of similar to this happened in the city of Baltimore when I lived there. There was one neighborhood that wanted more police protection than the rest of the city. And they formed a special zone. And the people there paid a little extra in taxes for specific, you know, policing and stuff like that. I don't know if want to create a boundary to Lower Bartonsville and see if the residents there would be interested in that to help, you know, cover this cost. It's a it's a hard thing because we don't have Rockingham police.
Right. And they, they totally don't want it. That's what we were told at several meetings. So even, it's been discussed at town meeting. It's been, it's been kind of run down. They don't really want policing in Rockingham, of course. At that point, at one point, it was the Bellas Falls Police Department. They were trying to expand out there and with the territorial issues we have in this town, that, that didn't seem to fly very far either. Sue, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to say that it's not just Lower Bartonsville people who are complaining about speeding. I hear these complaints from Cambridgeport Road, from Parker, Brookways Mills Road, from Pleasant Valley Road. I think the issue is, you know, something we can discuss at our budget time is whether we want to budget in not, not full-time policing in Rockingham, which is what people oppose to. They oppose to making the Bellas Falls Police townwide because the view was we would never see them. They would still stay in Bellas Falls. They would never get out to rural Rockingham. This is different in my view of contracting out for, for speed control and for the times when we have a complaint of someone doing something illegal on our roads. And we need to, we need police presence. We need someone to respond. And to get on that list with the Vermont State Police, we're at the bottom of the list if it's something they don't consider, you know, life and death. But if you had, if we could consider a townwide police contract with the Wyndham County Police that would spend some time in Bartonsville dealing with speed, some time with Upper Bartonsville, some time in, you know, the other roads where people do complain about the problems. I don't think Bartonsville is looking for, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah and others in the room, we're not looking for only exclusive presence in Bartonsville. We want control of the speeding and the use of riding down the road with a cell phone in townwide because it's a problem townwide. I think that's what's being raised here is looking at the possibility of, of contracting out and figuring out, is it twenty hours a week? Is it thirty hours a week? I don't, I don't know. I mean, a month, sorry. I don't know what that would be. And the other thing, when you look at the, the packet information with the people going over forty, those, I mean, it's something maybe if a sign can be programmed in the future, it should be over twenty five, not over forty, because our speed limit is twenty five. And when you break it down over those going over twenty five, over quarter of the popular, over the quarter of the drivers were going over twenty five miles an hour. And I think it's five percent, if I remember right, were going over forty. And when you live on a very narrow road with a lot of walkers and a lot of animals that the Lower Bartonsville Road is and some of our other roads in town, even going over thirty is a problem. And so I don't want, if you look at that chart and it looks like a tiny little sliver, it's not a tiny little sliver when you're walking that road and someone is speeding by at thirty five miles an hour. So I just wanted to make that clear.
It's interesting that you mentioned the cell phone enforcement because that's very lax in the whole state. You see drivers every day of the week with their cell phones in their app and they're, they're talking. And I don't know if they don't know how to use their car, phones, how they can hook them up. Maybe that's a problem. They don't know how to do the Bluetooth option on their car and they won't have that issue. But anyway, that, that's, that's a real laugher when you stop to look at it because like you can sit in Bellas Falls Village and you can watch them go through, yapping on the cell phone every day of the week, twenty four seven. So that's not the only, and speeding is not the only issue in, in Rockingham. There are some interesting comments on Facebook in regards to the bridge on one twenty one that's going to be closed possibly for eighteen months. Pretty soon, there's a meeting tomorrow night in Westminster about that, but a couple of comments there about speeding. Now it's going to end up going over on back Westminster Road that used to fly through Gageville. So it's an issue everywhere, not just here. And I think we need to talk a little bit more in depth on this in another meeting here, probably in September. I'm going to guess be the best time for that. So we can work on it. And as you say, there's no money in the budget. And I think we'd have to, as Sue said, work on something about getting money set aside in the, in the coming budget for that.
Can I ask a follow up question?
Sure. Yeah, go ahead.
Steve Chipman again. Someone I mentioned, Admiral, that was Sue or yourself, that some of the sort of default actions that come from a request from a specific village like Bartonsville, then it plays out with other locations of town. To do it for them, you gotta do it for us. Is that a, is that something that would hold true in, say, fireworks? We had a display on the fourth across the street from us that would rival the Saxon's River, Fourth of July. I have been to both now. I've been to, when they used to have that and I just sat in my bedroom and listened for a couple of hours. We had a couple wind up in the, in the yard. And so you know, come into the board or letting the town know that this is happening.
All right, there, I understand that there is a statute from the state dealing with fireworks. Anybody that has fireworks, other than a licensed operator for fireworks, is supposed to get a permit from the state of Vermont. The town of Rockingham does not have such an ordinance. We can possibly create one, but that's, that's then becomes a matter of enforcement.
So enforcement of what's happening out there on the, on the field, in the street. So does the town have to look to another entity, state police? What, what is the?
I think the fire departments can control some of that to some degree because I know in Saxon River, we, we contacted the trustees because our land, but it's an open field and they were shooting them off unbelievably in dry weather and we could just see the field catching on fire and whatever. But they posted a bunch of signs and then the owner of the field finally fenced it off. So that, that's one way we handle it out there. But I mean, I, I think the fire department, I know Larry White's pretty active about chasing down illegal burns and things like that. So.
So is it safe to assume that, you know, in the moment when they start? And usually at dusk, when they start, they start everywhere, you know, on a four holiday weekend, that there's really no place to call. There's no one who's going to come out and stop it. Is, is that a safe assumption in, in truth?
Well, I guess it's a little bit confusing sometimes because if you look to our neighbor to the north, Springfield, they actually have an ordinance where they will allow you to have displays and they will actually permit your display. And the fire commissioner will actually come out to your house before your display and issue you a a permit from the city for, for your particular, you know, whatever event that you're doing. We had talked about that and I, I don't think the board was comfortable going to that level to try to accommodate people because we get calls every year from a lot of people, quite frankly, even more than a dozen, who say, we want to do a large display and they want to get a permit. So it's really a it puts the community in a difficult position because we've got a host of people that want to do it and they're allowed to. Basically, once, once they get a permit from a, a city or organization, then we have folks like yourself who are sort of sitting there saying, well, we would appreciate you not blowing our fireworks into our yard. I can understand where that's annoying too.
This one went up and over our house and then lodged itself down next to our house.
I know. I see people blowing off these gigantic mortars, the kind that you see at like home days.
It's dry out. And this was a separate one that was in our duct.
Yeah.
Dry out. At least our structures, we have an old house. It's built from wood and last year or a couple of years ago, we tried calling the state police and said, can you make it stop? And we were just told, no, we can't. We don't have the manpower or whatever, but what do we do? The same neighbors race dirt bikes up and down the road. They're not roadworthy vehicles. These kids are not wearing helmets. They turn around in our driveway. They rev, you know, they race side by side on our tiny little road. And we don't have anybody we can call. We, that's why we started this, you know, the request. We just, we have nobody we can call. We can't, the sheriff can't do anything. The state police can't do anything. When the state police barracks was right up the road on one oh three, we could call and they would maybe send somebody down in a cruiser, at least discourage some of this stuff. Now we've got nobody. We're, we've got.
And we're not blaming the town. We're, we're.
No, it's frustrating because we feel the same way.
I guess we're looking for some guidance as to how we can better respond to some things that are happening. You know, we've been there thirty years and more now and we've seen it come and go and come and go and it's back and
Yeah, the needles and the drug exchanges are new, I have to say, but it's like the word got out that nobody's paying attention on our road and it's a good place to go and throw your trash and the fireworks. One of our neighbors who planned to be here, but he's, he's sick. Somebody drove by their house about three weeks ago and shot off a gun as they drove by their house. And two of the families who are sort of new in our neighborhood have both remarked to me that we wish we didn't buy a house here. We hate it. We don't feel safe. That makes me sad.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Rick had a question or wanted to follow up.
Question of the speed bumps, would that be any help to you?
I think it would. At least I think it's not going to be helpful by itself. I think it will be a fun thing for some people.
Yeah, if you're going to bash up those things, they really ruin the under care of your car. So.
I don't know that these people care.
That's what I like.
I think, I think it would be effective. I think it would be effective in addition to some policing because these people need to see intermittently, oh, the police do come down this road. And they're not always here at noon on this day. They're here at different times, you know, we just, we just need a presence. a presence.
Yep. In terms of what happens in this town gravel, I feel the town has responsibility for that. And is there dirt bike racing? Is there gunfire fireworks?
Oh, yeah. You name it.
It's like target practice is what I, you know, the the repetition and the cadence of the firing is like target practices.
So that that's something I feel we do have responsibility for. It's town property.
As far as speed bumps go, I think we need to check with Andy to see how that's going to work with the plowing out there on the road. Sometimes it damages the trucks. Equipment and things. So that could get costly as far as that goes. And, you know, there's issues with top with with speed bumps. That was mentioned once of putting them into the square in Bellas Falls to slow traffic. And you can see that that has nothing yet either. So I think we need to delve into this project a little bit more and come up with some sort of a resolution or some things that would be applicable for everybody. You know, if it means we create a district and you pay for your own police you know, coverage, that's that's one way of doing it. I don't think that's a a smart way to do it. I think it needs to be, as Sue said, needs to be covered for townwide. And we just you know, there's issues that we have to deal with and and talk to other entities about that situation. So you have to give us a little bit of time to deal with this. I don't know if you have any comments, Scott?
Well, I think Elijah, yeah, Elijah had a comment, then I'll I'll follow up on something there.
Okay.
Yeah. I know speed bumps are sometimes not popular. But I think they can be effective. I know they're not going to stop everybody, but I don't think that anyone's solution is going to cure all the problems. I think it's just, it's as many little things as you can do. You know, having the policing is not going to necessarily cure the problems either because unless you're going to have a police car sitting there twenty-four hours a day. But we're still going to have people speeding and, you know, doing stuff they shouldn't be doing. But every little thing is turned. So I think that we should look seriously at speed bumps. I think we should look at speed bumps in Bartonsville. I think we should look at speed bumps on the square. Now, there's going to be people who don't like them, but there's also people who kind of want to slow down. So that's the whole point. But that's that's something I think we should seriously consider. And I think that another thing might be the to install the speed radar signs permanently on either side of the old jumper.
May I say something that's
Yeah, I saw your hand up, ma'am. Go ahead.
I did speak to some of my neighbors last year. Now possibly put us in books there because our section of the road, it's absolutely straight and it's kind of like a racetrack sometimes. But but I was told that that would just make offenders angry and they might retaliate. And we don't, we don't want that. And they could retaliate against us, but enough we have asked for it because we have the very straight, long straight road. Yes, several people are worried about retaliation. You know, I I walk frequently with a couple other people and I walk with a toddler and a stroller and I walk with my dog and my neighbor's dog and so many times I ask people to slow down or I, you know, wave to them and say, hey, or I'll yell, slow down. And the way that people respond is terrifying. It's road rage kind of stuff. We had a road rage incident last year on our road and we've had a couple of other I would call it road rage where somebody, you know, speeds up or drives on somebody's lawn or it it's a scary feeling. This used to be a really safe little village to walk in or be out in your yard. And now we're everybody's really feeling very anxious. It's not a good feeling. And we don't have anybody that we can call.
All right, Scott. Yeah, final comments here so we can move along.
Yeah, just I guess on a couple of items, Peter, we I know that Westminster and I also believe that Saxon's River has been experiencing some concerns with the sheriff's current contracts because the sheriff's having difficulty meeting their obligations to those two communities. And we talked to Westminster recently, they weren't, they were looking at some problems and I I'm not sure what's happening in Saxon's River. If if we're going to pursue this, I think we would have to meet with the sheriff and see if there's the ability to to provide any kind of coverage that would be at least reasonable so that people feel like they're getting some value for that money. The second piece, just on speed homes and other communities I've worked in, we created policies where the neighborhood would create a petition. And so you would have to go to your neighbors and talk to your neighbors and get their approval. And if the neighbors approved, we would put them in temporarily so they could be removed after a period of time. And then we would then ask the neighbors. Do they want them to then have a more permanent or another solution for the problem? And what I found was, probably did this eight or ten times in a variety of different communities. And about ninety percent of the time, the neighbors who asked to put them in after six months asked me to take them out because they were annoyed at driving over them constantly. And it's it's just the nature of what they are. So that's just a consideration. So if we did anything, I'd recommend that we do something temporarily, work with the neighborhood, see if it solves a problem. And then if it does, look at a more long-term type permanent solution. But that's just
We have one final comment here so we can move along.
Well, yeah, it was just again about the speed humps. So we've had this discussion, actually, many years ago with Mike Hines and it was and I think Everett at the time too, that it was too difficult for the plowing to deal with speed humps. They wouldn't last very long. They would destroy the trucks and destroy the humps. So it would have to be some temporary thing which you'd put down in the summer. But we also have the world, we have a gigantic speed hump just before you get to the railroad tracks and that doesn't slow down a lot of people either. The covered ridge, they they fly through that too. So I I kind of don't, I don't get a sense that it's going to be very effective. I think the most effective thing will be the people, because it tends to be, I mean, we do have people who just come through our road, but it tends to be the same people every every day or every workday. If they randomly, if they think they're going to get a ticket, like when I enter Chester, I already think I'm going to get a ticket. I better slow down. It's but it's got to be random and it's got to be over a period of time. I think that will be the the most effective. You're still going to get the random person coming through. But if enough people who use that road every day get a several hundred dollars worth of tickets, that will slow them down. They know there's a chance. And that's the case, I think, in townwide. And also, as Sarah and Stephen said, you know, having someone knowing who we can call when we have these complaints of illegal activity that is happening on our road and knowing that we're going to get a response. That's what not just Bartonsville wants, but that's what the rest of Rocky wants, I would
Okay, let's, Scott, let's plan to get this on a future agenda, probably September, maybe if we're lucky and we can move along with that because at that point we'll be thinking about considering budget.
We want to have right to be the fireworks control officer.
Then expired fireworks, Steve, or is that a live one?
Sounds like ATF, right. It becomes a whole tobacco supplier.
Okay, let's, thank you guys for coming in, by the way. We we do hear your concerns and we're not going to just drop it. All right, let's move on to item number four, which is a remote scale, a remote scale indicator display down at the recycling center. There's information in your packet. And we'll, we'll need a motion to proceed with this tonight. So I've got one sort of written up here. So Scott, you want to?
Yep, the state is, the state, our weights and measures now requires a visible display. So if you go over any type of device that that, you know, weighs something, the person has to be able to see it, the customer, in order for it to be considered in compliance. And that scale is a registered with the state. So the company that did the scale install came down, they gave us a proposal on what it would cost for an LED indicator. As well as it's about another twelve hundred and fifty dollars roughly for the electrical work that would go along with that to make that system work. So at this point, we're asking the board to just authorize that. Moving ahead with Fairbanks' proposal to do the LED display and then we'll also spend, like I said, about twelve hundred and fifty dollars roughly on the electrical to come into compliance with the state requirement.
So that looks to be about four thousand dollars, Scott, between twelve and twenty-eight. So we make a motion to install a display, the scale and electric work not to exceed four thousand dollars. I need a motion to that effect.
So move.
You'll hear a second.
The second, and Elijah seconded.
Okay, I heard that. Motion is made to, and seconded to install display for scale and electric at the recycling center not to exceed four thousand dollars. We have a bid from Fairbanks at twenty-eight sixty-two and roughly twelve hundred dollars from Lawrence and Logan, who will be doing the electrical. Any comments?
We ever bid out electrical work to other vendors or we use the same people?
No, we try to do that. In fact, we've been using different contractors in this building. We've been using different contractors for the street lighting. And a lot of it just comes down to availability. And and quite frankly, at this point, we're we're having a difficult time getting contractors to respond. Most of our jobs are sort of ad hoc for them. So
Yeah, okay.
Okay, are you ready for the question? All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. You can notify the parties there, Scott, if you need to.
Very good. Thank you, Peter.
Hey, next item is approved grant agreement to Town Highway Class Two roadway paving. There's a whole bunch of paperwork in your packet there.
The state can't do much without lots and lots of paper to go with it.
Yeah.
But the good news is that this will be an offset to our current year budget. So this will be a hundred and forty-five thousand, which will be directly applied against our costs for Pleasant Valley Road repaving project. So this is actually good news for us to be able to authorize this agreement and move forward with that project.
A couple of questions. I noticed on the page, second page here, page three of nineteen, it says that we're getting a grant for a hundred and forty-five thousand, but there's a twenty percent match, which amounts of roughly twenty-nine thousand. We have the funds for that or is that an in kind or?
Well, that's just part of our, we already have the the money, remember, the six fifty set aside for the total paving project. So that that just gets absorbed.
So we'll need a motion to adopt or accept the grant agreement and authorize the manager to sign. Somebody want to make the motion or accept the one I just made?
So move what what you said, Peter.
Okay. You'll hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to adopt the grant agreement for a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars from the state and authorize the manager to sign the document. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor would say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. We went right along, item five, approved grant agreement. Notice we just did approval expenditure for train station project environmental review.
I've got Gary here.
Later in the packet, it's Gary's there to explain it, I guess, or attempt to.
Right. It's a little bit of background on this. We have multiple agencies that we're requesting funding from. And so Gary's trying to coordinate with the various agencies, they're required environmental work so that we don't end up, you know, spending more money that we don't, that we don't necessarily need to spend in order to be in compliance for this funding stack. So this is sort of another step along that, along that way. But I think Gary can kind of get into some more of the detail of that for you.
So there's, there's two reasons for for this being on here. As Scott just described, the requirement for federal funds. And the other piece is just to let the public know that we are doing this environmental review and and basically it could, it could be broken up into a few different projects. And as as Scott was saying, that would end up being a time, a time cost and a dollar cost additional. So so what we're doing here is looking at the the whole project and holding off on executing like the downtown transportation fund, the two hundred thousand dollar grant, holding off on that so that we can do the environmental review once, have choose a firm that is familiar with working with rail, rail stations and the state and the federal agencies. Just do a really thorough job and make sure we don't end up getting stuck at something down the road. So so those three things, cost efficiency, time efficiency and thoroughness, so we don't run into trouble. And we we do have a few good firms that are interested and would would be able to meet the timeline and get started right away and finish in time for an October notice to proceed with the grants for a purchase. Cost range, a pretty variable depending on what they run into and what the various agencies say as they submit them. Some of the agencies like, I believe, Environmental Conservation, Historic Preservation have a thirty-day review period in there and they can come back and ask for for other things to be included. So so we're saying a three thousand dollar to ten thousand dollar cost range. And and as you can see, we have close to five thousand dollars in a grant and so it could end up costing us another five thousand matching it. Or it could end up that the grant covers everything.
Gary, do you need a motion to adopt that, to accept that grant award? I just no place for any signatures on the form on page. I didn't know if you need to.
Um, yeah, it would, it would be helpful to to accept the grant and also to approve moving ahead with, ahead with a NEPA review, selecting a firm and contracting for the the NEPA environmental review.
Okay. Everyone who want to make the motion, as Gary just stated, that we move ahead with the NEPA Policy Act to take care of environmental issue and and then move to accept the award that's on the back page from BDCC for forty-eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I don't move.
Okay.
Hey, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to move ahead with the National Environmental Policy Act, a NEPA form that's explained on page one. And page two is to adopt the award that we've got from BDCC and the amount of four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars towards the environmental study. Any further discussion?
One question, would the one oh six review be part of this environmental review?
Yes.
Anything else? Sue?
No, I'll say.
Okay, there may no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion would say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, let's move on to financial. Notice we didn't have any expense spread out, Scott?
No, we haven't closed out yet. We're still recording prior year budget expenses. So I'll have that for you for the meeting, house meeting.
Okay.
Fill out a few items that she had not recorded yet or that had not come through on your warrants.
Okay.
Expense and revenue report, Peter.
Okay, can we look at page two of six, five here on the general fund?
Yep.
It shows, did we receive the fire department charges or is that just an item in there? It's partway down, about third of the way down on the charges for services. Eighteen, ten thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars. I thought Larry mentioned to me that that was involved with a accident charge. We received the money or something.
Build, yeah, we build for an accident and we did just receive a check for that. It was, and so that is part of that recorded number. That's the action.
All right, looks like we are doing quite well at recycle. Our, the money that we're over here should probably take care of the transportation costs. Transfer station, trucking, or whatever they call it there. That will show up until we get the expense account sheet anyway. That won't show up until we get the expense account sheet anyway.
Right.
Peter's question?
Yeah, go ahead, Rock.
The FEMA, the $300,000 we were going to get from FEMA a year ago. What's up with that?
All those costs have been approved. They've been, they've been routed through the state and through the FEMA District One people. Everything that was on the worksheets has been accepted. We're just waiting on a check to come back from the program.
Good. So they just move it to Glacial Face?
It just, it'll, it'll come. That's what they tell us. So we recorded those revenues in this current budget year. So since we have those expenses in this budget year. So they should be an offset.
All right, you'll let us know when that check arrives?
Oh, sure. I think the total of everything is about 600,000.
Yeah, it's on page five, Rick. If you look on page five of five there, it's a highway. It shows you the amount that's on the received. Six oh nine, almost 610,000.
Thank you.
That would have been one of my questions. We got that, we got that in our pocket yet, but Scott just answered that before I got there. Anyone else have any questions on the financials as we have them?
Well, overall, it seems like our revenue has been good. I would say that we're going to come out with overall positive year in relationship to our revenues and expenses. I think that, yeah, there was a lot of unusual revenue this year and it's going to be a challenge to see what next year comes. I think the feds have been filling a lot of gaps on a lot of things. And you know, like our bridge and a few other things, which has been very helpful for us. We haven't had to go and borrow and take on large capital expenses. But it remains to be seen just how active they're going to be going forward. Yes, I think last year was a good budget year for us as well.
Scott, is the solar revenue, is that been booked yet, the solar field over by the gravel pit?
No, he had to delay his install because of the right-of-way issue with the Savage Garage that they're doing some mining on his property there. And part of the area that they're mining impacts where he is placing the new power for the solar array. So he has held off on installing the power until they're done with the mining portion behind Savages.
Okay, but there's no legal contest between Savage?
No, no, it's just, it's just they had asked him to delay and he agreed. So the last I spoke to him, and I speak to him about every four to six weeks, he doesn't anticipate any problem and, and he anticipates we'll see the revenue in this current budget year starting July 1st. So great, they got all their permits and everything they need. Everything is permitted. So beautiful. He just did, you know, he just did a voluntary. He was waiting until that other work was done. All right, that's good. Because it does impact where they're going to put the transmission lines for the solar. So they just decided not to have a conflict or to have a problem. Mining can be a little bit of a messy operation, you know, the gravel line, so.
Anything else on our financials? Hearing none, let's move on down to reviewing approved orders, bills and warrants. Can you get a motion?
I do have them down here. We'll have to maybe when you come back, Peter, you can sign as well.
Yep.
I can give Rick and Elijah to at least sign for now.
We need a motion. Someone want to make a motion approval?
Make a motion to approve orders, bills and warrants.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been seconded to approve orders, bills and warrants. All those in favor would say aye.
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 Agenda items for the August ninth meeting, which will be at the Rockingham Meeting House. I have the cemetery committee is going to, going to report.
We're going to have an update from Walter on the historic structures report. If you remember, the board had authorized up to $10,000 to help with that piece of their overall long-term capital planning. So that we're, we have interviewed firms. We have four that we're asking for a follow-up interviews this week and then we'll have a proposal, hopefully that will be authorized by you at that meeting so that we can move that process forward. And then the results of that process then will, I think, align with our budgeting discussions later on through the late fall and ultimately with the Save America's Treasurers application process, which is what they're hopeful to try to get to cover some of these, you know, significant foundation and other improvements in the building.
Okay. Do we have a few minutes, few weeks on the, anybody has any other agenda items for the August ninth meeting? Just give us an email and we'll see what's getting it on. Did anybody happen to see, well, I'll bring it up on other business. Review agenda items for the joint board meeting. We got a month or so on that one. That's September 27th. So if anyone has any things they'd like to bring up on that. Other business. Sue? Sue, do you have any other business?
Sorry, no, I'm, I'm all set. Thanks.
Okay. Elijah?
No, nothing for me.
Scott?
All set, Peter. Thank you.
Rick?
Nothing.
Bonnie?
No.
Okay, other business. Did you happen to see the article in the minutes from Westminster about the bridge out there? Rick, you look like you're going to get your bike paths there included in the new design supposedly, according to what I've read in there.
I saw that. I'm really thrilled. I've been in correspondence with JB McCarty, the engineer at V-Trans and he listened to us and we're, the bike ped committee is pretty psyched.
Yeah, not thrilled to have it being closed, the road out there for 18 months.
It's good news, bad news, I think.
Yeah, well, we'll see where that goes, I guess. All right, there is a need for the executive session tonight. It'll be for real estate and personnel. So we need someone to make a motion. I think it's the first one up there, I think.
Got the card, this card?
Yes, yeah, I think you only need one motion to go in for, for those items. So you can move it on one time if you want.
All right, do you want to use that? I moved the board in a certain session to discuss.
Real estate.
Real estate.
And personnel.
Personnel and state and the corresponding statute provision is Title I, Section 313A two.
That's it. So we need a second. A second? So we will be in executive session. Once we get everybody closed off of Zoom, except those that are supposed to be on, the board members. And we may have a statement once we come out, so.